Welcome to the second public meeting for crafting the budget for the city council. So I understand we're live today. So I hopefully will have some participation and really happy to be here. We had our first meeting last night and we wanted to have a daytime meeting. We'd heard from folks who are more available in the daytime, so we have the meeting here this morning. And then we do meet again tonight at six o'clock. So if you're not able to get down here for this meeting, please join us at six o'clock tonight, same place. At this time, I am going to turn it over to Doug to kind of kick off the beginning of our budget talks.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Welcome everyone to the second in a series of meetings that we're having concerning the 2015 budget process. In terms of the objective for these meetings, I think there's several objectives for these. First, we want to try to clarify any budget questions that might be lingering out there or any questions that the public might have, to make some budget issues known and to help the council identify budget issues as they move forward in working to the adoption of their 2015 budget process. So this morning, we will have a budget overview presentation by Budget Manager Nikki Lee. And then after that, there'll be a chance for some public comments and then turn it back to the council for final comments and clarifications. So unless there's questions moving forward, I'd like to turn it over to our Budget Manager, Nikki Lee.
Thank you. Hello, as he said, I'm Nikki Lee. I'm the Budget Manager. Just wanted to walk through before we started a few of our online resources. On the homepage on the City of Topeka, there's a "Where's the Money?" tab. And this was created to hopefully make a really easy link for everybody to get to, not only some budget information, but also some financial reports. So if you go to this link here, we have a tab here for city budget, but also for some ongoing reports here. For these financial reports, these focus mostly on the current year. So a lot of these reports are updated for the year 2014. If you go to financial reports here, you can see both monthly reports and quarterly reports. And these reports are a very nice new format, hopefully pretty user-friendly, very visual, a lot of charts and graphs. We definitely encourage everyone to go out there and look at these, and these are also reviewed with the city council whenever they're updated. So these will be available to everybody here. And on the budget page, for one thing is my contact information. So if any of you, any members of the public, any members of the council will have any comments or questions after this, you're certainly welcome to contact me anytime by email or phone. And also, as we go through the budget process, we'll be updating information on our website. Our intention is to update as often as we can announcements, presentations, documents. We've got our budget calendar on here. So we're trying to be very open, very clear about when meetings will be happening. Also, after our budget meetings, we'll have links on here to the videos that you can watch. If you're not able to attend any of these meetings, you'll be able to still watch the videos after the event. So certainly, if you're ever looking for budget information that's not on our website, let us know. We're trying to make this a useful tool to everybody. So definitely willing to keep this updated and make any revisions as you see fit. Another thing we'd like to emphasize today is, of course, this is a televised event, but we also are promoting this as an online event. We've got an online poll, which I'll walk you through at the end of my presentation. That's really open out there to members of the public and will be open for the next few weeks. So in addition to people coming to these actual meetings and sending comments, we also have an online poll to be able to engage people outside of these meetings to give their input into the budget. So today, just going to give an overview of the budget process and talk a little bit about some specifics about the 2015 budget. First of all, what is a budget? A budget for cities in Kansas is a required document. We have to update the budget every year. And we also have certain deadlines that we have to meet for the state and the county. We have to turn our next year's budget into the county by August 25th. So that's really the reason that cities in Kansas really start talking about budget sometimes as early as February, is that we're backing into a date in August that we have to submit everything for that next coming year. So sometimes I think to the public, it feels really early to be talking about 2015, but the reason for that is that we're backing into that date at the end of the summer. So the budget, of course, that's kind of a, just like your own personal budget, it's a plan of how many revenues you're expecting to bring in that year and also how you plan to spend it. So, you know, of course, it's very focused on the dollars and the numbers, but also we see it as a policy. It's really the council's way of telling members of the public where they want to focus their resources, where their priorities are. So we really see it as a planning tool throughout the year to tell us where we're really going to be targeting resources in the city. Some key definitions as we go into the budget. Revenues, those are our sources of income, so this is all the dollars that come into all of our city funds. Some big revenue sources, at least in the general fund for the city, are our property taxes and our sales taxes. And I'll talk a little bit more detail here. But we also have revenues into some other special funds. For example, our utilities, our stormwater fees, wastewater fees, water fees. These are all revenues that we have going into to support all of our different initiatives. Expenditures, this is really simply how we're going to spend our money. And then a fund, funds are different accounts, kind of like different checking accounts, that are all serving different purposes. We have many, many funds in the city, and even though we talk a lot about the general fund, we have to budget for all of our different funds. And we really have different summaries for all of these funds throughout the budget So the general fund, the reason we talk a lot about the general fund is that this is really kind of the catch-all for anything that's not supported by a different special fund. And this is primarily funded by your property tax. So when we talk about what the general fund supports, 74% of that is public safety, and that includes police and fire. We also have a lot of other things out of the general fund. We have infrastructure, which is public works, and also our support of the cemeteries. We have recreation and leisure. This includes our funding for the zoo, our payment for parks, which of course now is funded through the Shawnee County. And then also, we make some payments for different organizations like T-PAC. That's out of this recreation and leisure portion. Courts and legal, that's municipal courts in our legal department. We've got internal services, which really things like finance, human resources, things that we really need to do to operate the city day-to-day. Community development, this is our housing and neighborhood department. We have our grants, so we have a series of social service grants and other grants that we pay out, and then also our planning department. And then city governments at 2%, this is our city council, our executive, and our city manager's office. So overall, the general fund makes up 42% of our total budget, so it's the majority of our budget. But we do have other, a lot of other big funds. Our utility funds make up 31% in total of our total budget. So these are the majority of our budget are made up between these two types of funds. So just a little catch-up for, I guess, where we are. You all may be wondering, how is the city doing financially right now? In the general fund, at the end of 2013, we were able to add to our fund balance. And really, the reason we were able to do this is a combination of things. One is, I would say, very good expenditure management by the council and by departments. They were very efficient throughout the year, made cuts where they needed to, to make sure that we were being good stewards of resources. But also, at the same time, our revenues came in a little bit better than we budgeted. So the economy, you might be feeling it personally, is starting to turn around a little bit. Sales tax came in a little bit better, property tax. So there were some areas that came in a little bit better than expected, which is also going to help us in the 2015 budget. So a little bit more about all of our funds. One kind of, I guess, fund area that we have are our special revenue funds. And these are all of our funds that are set up for very specific reasons in the city. For example, our downtown business improvement district, this is a special fund that the downtown businesses that want to participate pay money into this fund. And then the fund is used to pay for things to service specifically those downtown businesses. This is also, we consider the citywide half-cent sales tax, which is for our street maintenance, is considered a special revenue fund. The debt service fund, this is a very big important fund to us. This is also supported by the mill levy, so by your property taxes. And this is the fund that we use to pay for all of our payments, our principal and interest on any capital improvement projects that we've borrowed money for in the past. Sometimes we bond projects for anywhere from 10 to 20 years. So this fund, we've got a 20-year forecast on this fund, so it's a very important fund as we're doing the budget. Enterprise funds, these are the utility funds that I mentioned before. Pretty much an enterprise fund is any kind of fund that's paid for by user fees. So for example, in the parking fund, if you're parking in the city's parking lots or parking garages, you're the only ones that are paying for that service. And also, anything out of that fund, any of the expenditures are used to support parking. So also, we've got the water fund, we have the wastewater fund, the stormwater fund. All of those are paid by user fees, meaning you're charged for those services based on the amount that you use. And then also, everything that's paid out of that fund is used to support those services. And in total, our enterprise funds make up 31% of our total budget, so also a very big important area as we go into the budget process. Our internal service funds, this is, these are funds that we have helped, basically, we use these to operate the city day-to-day. For example, fleet services, all of our departments pay into a fleet services fund, which then is used to fix our vehicles as we go throughout the year, all the vehicles that are used to service all of the departments. Information technology, we have an internal service fee where departments pay into this fund, and then all of our IT services are paid out of a centralized area, facilities. And when you all see the proposed budget book, all of these areas will be broken out. And then finally, our capital project funds, this is used to pay for any major equipment and construction projects. For the most part, these aren't ongoing expenses, these are one-time big capital purchases. So a little bit more about where we've been in the recent past. As you know, the Great Recession impacted the City of Topeka and everybody personally. Overall, in the country, there was 11.2 trillion in market losses, so of course, that trickled down to affect the City of Topeka. And overall, consumer confidence dropped from 95.2 to 25.3. That is very significant. Where that impacts Topeka is if consumer confidence is low, people are purchasing less, which means we're getting less in sales tax. So really, what's going on in the greater economy really does and did have an impact on the City of Topeka. In general, our, where we are in Topeka is we're doing better, we're slowly coming out of the recession, but we're not back to where we were. So most of our numbers are better than where we've been in 2011, 2012, but not quite to where we were before the recession, so around 2008. So for example, as you can see on here, unemployment in Topeka peaked at 7.9% and it's down to 6.2 in 2014. And the median household income was $52,000 in 2008, coming up from 2011 to $48,000, but still not quite to where we were. So overall, that's kind of the message to our overall budget, is that we're slowly coming back a little bit. We've got, you know, revenue projections that are pretty conservative, but still not quite as aggressive as maybe we used to be. In the City of Topeka, we have four main revenue sources, and most of these are economically sensitive. So, you know, when times are bad, when the recession hit, the reason that the City of Topeka suffered was that all of our major revenue sources are really contingent on the greater economy. So our property tax is based on, of course, the values of your home. So if home values are going down, then we're getting less in our revenue for our property tax. Sales tax, of course, that's really contingent on how much people are spending. And also, our franchise fees, these are our utility taxes. So when you pay for your electricity and your gas, those companies have to give the city a portion of those revenues. So if people are conserving on their electricity and their gas, that means also we'll be getting less on the revenue side. So where are we today? We're doing a couple of real important things in 2014 going into 2015. Our ongoing goal is to be building fiscal sustainability. So we want to be putting Topeka in a place where we can be going forward and having a five-year forecast that's a balanced budget, that's putting us in a responsible financial footing. We have ongoing expenditure management, so meaning, you know, just because we pass a budget doesn't mean we're not thinking about the budget as we go throughout the year. We're always constantly looking for efficiencies, looking for opportunities to save where we can, modifying the budget where we need to. We have a formal revenue projection policies or process, so we're really looking more carefully at where are our sales tax going, trying to project that into the future. And then the overall debt burden for Topeka has decreased, so this is a great impact and help to our budget. So as we move into 15, some overall themes here are that we are seeing some slow growth in our revenues, being very conservative here. We do think that sales tax and property tax are going to be increasing, but we're being very conservative because we want to be sure to hit all of these targets. There are a lot of expenditures that are rising. These are considered our fixed costs. So no matter what we do, there are certain costs that are going to be going up that we need to account for. For example, fuel, asphalt, electricity and gas, those are things that, you know, just like in your personal budget, you have to pay for, and you really have no control about where they're going. We also have employee costs, so we have a rising cost and benefits. We also have contracts with different of our labor groups that are committing us to certain amounts of monies in the out-years, things like our insurance premiums. So as we start to build a 2015 budget, these are all knowns that we know that are going to be increasing, that we need to make up for. So in order to absorb some of these costs, we will be proposing a budget that has targeted expenditures in certain areas to allow us to absorb some of these priority increases. And really, the reason for this is that we're really wanting to address a structural imbalance. So in the past, occasionally, sometimes there's been budgets where expenditures have been higher than revenues. We're going to be having, making sure we're balanced in the future years and always paying attention, not only that one-year budget, but also how it impacts the five-year forecast. So of course, as the budget is being built, the council sets the budget priorities. So the 2015 council budget priorities in alphabetical order are developing neighborhoods, establishing fiscal sustainability, investing in infrastructure, and a continued commitment to public safety. So the city council's budget will be sure to address all of these budget priorities. And these are definitely come from what they're hearing from their constituents about what's important to them. Also internally, the staff has organizational priorities. So when we work as a city in our departments, we have certain things that we always like to speak to. So we're always looking to improve our customer service, fiscal health is very important, organizational excellence, safe and secure community, stewardship of physical assets, that's pretty much taking care of our infrastructure, and always making sure that we're investing in thriving and livable neighborhoods. So this is the council budget priority. These are going to be all the upcoming meetings that the council is going to be having to really set forward their proposed budget. We've got a few public events, there's going to be another opportunity tonight, and of course, an online opportunity, which we'll share with you here shortly. And then the budget committee meetings to discuss the proposed budget start on June 14th and proceed after that through the month of June. The proposed budget book will be presented to council about a week ahead of that, and that will be available online for everybody to see, so you can see specifically what's actually going to be included in the budget. Following June, we have a couple of dates in July that we have to meet. We get our actual revenue estimate from the county and from the state by July 1st. So really, what that does is that tells us, you know, we've been making projections on everything, and that gives us our assessed valuation of what those numbers actually are going to be. And then we will be proposing a finalized budget by mid-July. That's the point at which council will have made all their important budget decisions. There will be a public hearing following that, and then the council will officially adopt the budget around August 12th, and that's really to meet the deadline of going to the county by August 25th. And this calendar is available on the budget website, along with all the locations of all these meetings, so everybody can see and attend those as well. So what we'd like you to do now, for the members of the public, is we, you know, we've set out our, the city council's city budget priorities, and what we'd like to know is, from the members of the public, what are some important areas to you all? So what we've done is we've set out different areas that we really feel like speak to the council budget priorities. So for example, bikeways, that really speaks to infrastructure. Code enforcement, this is really enforcement of our property maintenance codes around the city, so this relates to unsafe structures, housing, weeds, things like that. We'd all consider that part of code enforcement. Community policing is really a collaboration between not only our police department, but also the public, to kind of target our policing efforts into certain neighborhoods. Street maintenance, this could be a variety of things. This could be taking care of our streets, taking care of potholes. Sidewalks, taking care of sidewalks, but also putting in new sidewalks. We have snow removal, we've got the Topeka Zoo, and we have water main replacement. So we're asking everybody, you can go on now, or you can go on anytime, really for the next few weeks. And there's different, three different ways that you can vote. You can vote for up to three. You can either text in your vote, and you would text it to 22333. You can do it via Twitter, so you Twitter @poll, and then you would use the identified keywords here. And you have to always do it three times. So for three votes, that would be three separate tweets or three separate texts. And then also, what you can do is on your smartphone or on your computer at home, you can go to pollev.com backslash City of Topeka, and then it's simply buttons that you push three times. So we're asking everybody to go ahead and do that right now if you'd like to, or you could think about it and do a little bit later. And what we've got here is we've got an online, or we've got a live tabulation of how all the votes are going. This is actually, we've been very surprised and excited about our online participation. This is actually our second round of voting. So once all the votes are in, we'll tabulate all the responses and make it available to everybody to show what all the leading areas are. So with that, we can take, I'll take any questions, or we can open it up to public comment?
Thank you, Nikki. Yes, Mr. Paulson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to comment and build on what Nikki said. This is the second of our public meetings. We have one more this evening at six o'clock. And we've had a small number of people who have showed up and participated, and we hope for more people this evening. But this poll has actually been quite successful. I think at last count, we have over 400 people who have responded to the poll. So people are paying attention to this. And I know there's also been some emails that have been sent to council members and others. We're going to make sure that that information is discussed and talked about also as we proceed. So thank you.
Thank you. And I want to thank everybody that's here today, as well as online, and maybe perhaps watching us on television. It has been, I thank you for that presentation. I think that's very helpful. I really appreciate the hard work that the folks have done from Budget Nikki and Doug and the rest of your team. So really appreciate all that hard work. We do have some folks with us today who have signed up to speak, and the first one is Rita
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, city folks. Been around this community for some time, and I don't recall ever seeing such openness in preparing a budget. So I want to commend you for that and thank you for that. I'm here to first publicly cast my vote, and of course, I will go online later and do that, take that opportunity as well, and I hope more other people will too. My vote will be for the basic necessity called water. Just point-blank water. And not just water, but clean, decent water. I got to tell you before I go any further, I'm not a city resident, I live in the county. However, a portion of my property tax does go to the city, sales tax, and based on what Nikki said, some of my franchise fees supports it. But my water does come from the city. So I'm concerned about that water because just this year, we've had two violations from our water department. In 2009, there wasn't a violation, but let me read to you a disclaimer. Infants and children who drink water containing lead in excess of the level could experience delays in their physical or mental development. Children could show slight deficits in attention span and learning abilities. Adults who drink this water over many years could develop kidney problems or high blood pressure. In addition to those illnesses, in the 2014 violations, that too has already occurred, there was a disclaimer saying that the risk is created from long-term exposure. Also, some people who drink these water that exceeds the acids, over many years, have an increased risk of getting cancer. Well, that probably explains why every time I've visited the cancer center, that most of them are senior citizens there. An overexposure of these chemicals, sir. And I believe at the April meeting, the mayor and city manager, you said that you guys were looking at the engineering reports. And I'd like to know, can you tell me, is there anything being done to replace the water purification system? Will that become a budget priority? I'm pleading with you.
We will address that. We will address that as we bring that forward as part of budget discussion.
Would, my next question is, would you mind moving it from the last thing on the priority list? Because you've listed the bikeways, the policing, all of those are good ideas, I don't discredit those. But the number-one thing that we need is decent water. So would you mind moving that to the top of the list, please? Could that become?
I think I appreciate your comments, Rita, and that's a good point. I think that that wasn't supposed to be in any particular priority order, just listed in, I don't know if that's alphabetical or what, but yeah. It's not exactly alphabetical, but I don't know what the actual process was, but we'll look at that to see if there's anything can be done. But I appreciate your comments very much.
All right, thank you for clarifying that.
Were you, had you finished, or you have more that you would like?
No, no, I'll just be watching and hoping that this water gets better.
And I remember you came when we had the public comment on the sales tax issue, and I appreciated you passing out that information. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir.
The next person who has signed up to speak is Rick Friedstrom.
Good morning. My name is Rick Friedstrom, and I live in 1220 Oakley here in Topeka. I've lived here 62 years, and I don't have a TV. And I'm really glad that WIVW ran an ad about 10:15 saying that there was a meeting at 11 o'clock, or I wouldn't have known about it today. So I'm glad to be here, and I'm fortunate that I relocated from Wanamaker Quarter to downtown about nine months ago, so it was very easy to walk over here from my office. And my notes, I'm going to skip a little bit because my notes were taken as I was walking down Sixth Street coming here to be ready for this. But some of the comments are fairly seen pretty easily, and one is that Topeka is a small community. And we always will be a small community, and we really shouldn't try to be a big community. And I think that's reflected in some of the priorities that are being shown right here. But we are a community that has a lot of land, and we live in a city that has a lot of land that is either demolished, or is uninhabitable, or is run by the city and is off our property tax rules. And somehow, some way, and I'm sure you're working on this far more intently than I am, we need to find a way of getting land that's off the tax rules back on the tax rules. We can ask the city, the federal government, the county and the city to relocate out of the property limits we have, but somehow, some way, we need to better utilize the land that we have for property taxes. I'm pretty involved in Warsaw, and also, and from the Warsaw president, I've heard recently that the property, or the sales tax issue is a major concern of the university. And the comments that were made recently indicate that it doesn't seem to be on the city level, but it sure is on the university's side. So Chad, I would hope you would talk with the president of the university and find out what's happening, and maybe speak with Dr. Maszczak and the foundation and find out if the reduced sales tax is affecting the university as it is the City of Topeka right now. I do support the sales tax that's being proposed. My waistline doesn't show up, but I like riding a bike. And I've made, I've made full use of the bikeways that are here, and I love them immensely. But we need to be sure that we do provide the citizens of our community a quality of living. We're not going to be, we're not going to be a large community, as I said, but we need to be sure that we provide good quality to the citizens we have. And we need to be sure that the citizens that live here, I'm sorry, the citizens that work here remain here to live and don't commute 25 miles to live and work and pay taxes and spend their money outside of the Topeka area. But I will support that. I relocated earlier, as I said, I relocated to downtown a while back because I wanted to be back downtown. Topeka is the center of town, it's where everything's happening right now, and it's where we need to be making sure that we have a strong section to be promoting who we are and what we are and how we're going to be 15 years from now. And if we don't have a strong downtown Topeka, the viability of our community, when our children are where we are today, might be a little bit tough. We might have a number of folks leaving. And Denise, you might have thought about that when you were sitting on the legislature number of years ago. I do support it. I don't think we'll ever be what we were in 1950. I don't think Topeka will ever be where we were in 1950, when farmers in the Turtle Creek area were getting large amounts of money from the federal government to buy their land so that their property, which had good grazing and farmland, was going to be inundated by Turtle Creek. And they took those pots of money and bought homes in Topeka and paid cash. We're never going to see that again. But we need to find a way to be sure that citizens relocate here. Somehow, some way, we've got, we have a lot of people that have lived here that have left, and as they start to retire, maybe there's opportunities if we do some public-private partnerships to attract some of those citizens that have left to return back here. Wouldn't that be neat if that would happen someday? I don't think the models that are provided by Jane Jacobs and by Richard Florida are probably appropriate for Topeka. probably appropriate for Topeka. There are probably other good models that can be used. We're not going to be a city of skyscrapers, but we could be a community of really nice, developed areas that provide for a lot of opportunity in our community. And I would hope that as you're looking at the budget, maybe not this year, but as you're looking at budgets in the next five to ten years, and where the partnership between the city and the county come into play, we can make things work and make things happen, and do it efficiently, and do it with a budget that provides a public and private partnership. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. The next, we have Steven Crab, I think it's Crabtree?
Yeah, and I'm not just doing that.
Okay, thank you for coming, though. Is there anyone else? I had someone else who'd signed up, but wasn't sure if they wanted to speak. Is there anyone that wants to speak? I want to make sure I give that opportunity to anybody that's in the audience. Okay, seeing none, I, again, it's really been very helpful, and I appreciate the hard work of staff and the city manager for asking for public input. I think that is, is a very important thing, that step that we are taking. The online poll is showing to be very popular, and we're very happy that we're getting that kind of feedback. And at this point in time, I, I want to remind people that we do have another opportunity for them tonight at six o'clock, but I would like to share, before I ask my colleagues here on the council. I, after last night's meeting, I had several calls and constituents from my district, District Four, who weren't able really to come down here, and, but they wanted me to at least speak to the issues that are pressing to them as far as the budget. So, I just wanted to sort of bring that up for discussion purposes, and to make sure that their voices are heard. I had a couple of callers who talked about older neighborhoods and the difficulty with sidewalks, and so, they really encouraged the city to look at a way, I know we have the, the, you know, housing and development programs and sort money, but they wanted us to try to explore some other options for replacing sidewalks or building sidewalks in some of the older neighborhoods that, that struggle and still don't have those in place. So, that's an issue that I think we, as a city, ought to be visiting. I also had some calls on code enforcement. People were excited about the opportunity that the, the new code that we've adopted is going to take effect, I think, at July one, and they're looking forward to seeing how changes that makes, but there was a request that perhaps we need more code enforcement officers, so I, I'm just laying that on the table since I, I heard that from folks in my district. And then the other comment that I got was about parks and rec, and while the folks in my district understand that that's now primarily a county issue, they wanted to express their concern, especially about the Abbott Center, and whether or not the city can do anything to encourage the county to, to look at the, the, I guess, the centers and the things that were formerly controlled by the city, but now are operated under the county. They're a little concerned with closings, and whether or not things are being maintained the way the city had probably wanted them to be maintained. So, I'm passing that on because those were some of the calls and emails that I got, but I would also like to see if Councilwoman Mans Speaker or Councilwoman Hiller have any comments or want to share anything that they've heard from constituents.
Yeah, that would be great, thank you very much. I'm trying to write them down here real quick, because I didn't write them down. I had a number of folks respond to a question that I asked on Twitter as to what their priorities would be. I didn't have the, the keyword priorities at that point. But, investment in, investment in neighborhoods came up, had a handful of folks for bikeways. One person talked about holding the, the line on spending, roads and public safety, sidewalks, neighborhood investment. Those were really the main themes that I heard repeated over and over.
Thank you.
Yep.
Councilwoman Hiller?
I, I really, I have heard the same things. I got some of the letters from your constituents, which were very well, well-spoken, and so I, I'm hearing the same things. Don't have anything to add, thank you.
All right, well, is there any other comments or questions from council, or are we? All right, well, at this point, I think we will adjourn this meeting and hope to see people tonight at six o'clock.